Ira. All right, please call the meeting, special meeting Wednesday at 5:00 Friday night, the fire commission to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all.
Oh, glory, you kind of strung up there funny.
It's all right.
All right, welcome to the special meeting. There's only two orders of business tonight. One is to review capital submissions that were requested by Brad. It's capital not recurring. And then the second item is discussion of the tax incentive in preparation for the November 12th meeting where we're going to have the first selectmen and the air of the board of finance present. Of course, election based, that could all change, but right now we're set to have the analysts. So I'll open the discussion with the review of capital submissions. I can do Stony Hills first. I can do, we can talk about South Street, whoever you prefer.
Just not.
All right. You know everything, it's in here Fred already, so. So this here. Basically, what I just handed out there was a basic historical review of items that are in the capital for post capital over the next couple of years that were also in the capital budgets. For like the last fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. And historically, as you look at that, we will see that it pretty much parallels where we're at today. So I don't, I don't see any need tonight to discuss that, that historical perspective on the the capital expenditures is certainly not the call of the meeting tonight. But any chance I think that this is going to be good reading for you to see where the past chiefs, the two were sitting at your table tonight. Fred and Peter, who have been in this process a lot longer than I have. And both Peter and Fred proposals over the last few years, a lot of it mirrors what was on the agenda tonight. And we're talking years here. So all I need, this is a good foundation for I think what we're going to talk about that because there certainly is no need to review it. You take it home and look at it, but I think it will support, probably solidify what's on the agenda. So with that being said, Commissioner, I think that you want to start off with, you know, I think the best way would have been, would be to look very quickly at what the the minutes of the last mystery's meeting were in terms of the things that we discussed. Refurbishment of a couple pieces of apparatus versus replacement, replacement versus refurbishment, elimination of one of the purchases that being the chief's car in lieu of solidifying the purchase of a ladder truck. And that's the primary thing tonight that I'd like to discuss or start. So Mr. May, in all due respect, I'll let you start and then you can take your share, okay?
Is this the latest version of this? Because I thought we had a ladder truck in the Bethel Fire Plant.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't think this is, this is not the latest version of this. Um, but in any event, the only items we want to talk about now were the capital non-recurring. So I think and part of reviewing this plan is what we have Dan here. And we have Nick here to talk about the fact that we put a ton of work into this, right? And we we don't have any commitment that this is the capital plan. That the overall capital, we have no commitment. So we can work on this, we can work on this till the cows come home. And unless we get a commitment that it's going to go somewhere, we don't understand, right? We don't know what's in the plans.
Yeah, we have a ladder truck for 2.8 million, 27.28.
That's something.
Yeah.
So what's in 26, 27?
26, 27 is rescue two.
There was the rescue and the tanker over the next couple of years. And this current year was going to be the the chief's car.
And there's a tanker refurb in 32 or 32, 33. Tanker refurb.
So in any event, this, I think the overall capital plan, we have to get into, right? Because this budget season again, part of the reason of having Dan and Nick here is to talk about how do we use this as a tool? We spent a lot of time putting this together as a tool to convey, here's what we need to do. And here's what's going to keep the departments running, but there really hasn't been any feedback to say, oh yeah, we agree with this and we're going to, we're going to move towards this. So and this plan in the past years has just been subject to, I would just push it forward, just push it forward, just push it forward. You know, it's snow flowing ahead and it's not. It's not taking any traction. Obviously, we got traction with the tower in, or the ladder in Stony Hill. But it didn't, we still don't have a plan for the rest of these. That was a fight to push that one through and make that one happen. So.
What year did you say the towers in 27, 28?
Yes.
This is what we.
This is what we sent out. Yeah. So ultimately, I support this, I support without even reading it, I see what it's about and I support it. And I think it ties to this and what we have to get by into. This evening, we wanted to talk about capital not recurring and the things you want to put into the the individual items you want to throw into the budget. And present. So.
For this year's budget or presentation?
Do you have an updated cap?
For this year. And I apologize because we're a little bit behind on or got caught, caught behind on this because Brad had asked Brad had asked both the chiefs without mentioning to us that he wanted the budget by the end of the month. So and I answered details of what he asked you for. I don't even, never even got that. So we're working a little bit blind here.
No, he did the same thing to me. I dropped off some bills, you know, on the link to go and.
So do you have anything for non-recurring capital, non-recurring that you want to add this year versus Stony Hill as you have?
The on spot.
Three items?
Well, I got another one I can give, well. Gas meters. On spots and I think it was many, many cutters.
First meeting cutter. I have those three items. One of the, one of those three items has free quotes, which is great. The other ones do not, which, you know, doesn't, the budgeting. For the budgeting, the activity doesn't need free quotes. As long as we get someone here proof for it, then we will get quotes on it. Those, was it those three items?
And then the last item. President Doug was working on the radios for the trucks. Which I guess he finally got a quote for. I guess from both departments too.
And that shows up in, that's in the overall capital plan. Well, there's a placeholder for it in the overall capital plan. And that was tied to the police upgrade as well, right?
I don't want the police, but this is what Doug gave me.
I like that. It looks like you just put your credit card number. You put your credit card number in for $198,000 and just click buy it now.
Yeah, he just, he got that quote the other day. So it wasn't able to, I just finished printing it. I don't know how many heads that is. I got told this from both departments.
All right, I'm a little bit confused. We're talking about the capital plan and the capital non-recurring plan as if it's two separate things. My way I understand is the capital plan is one thing. There is no longer a 403 account in either one of the budgets. They took that out several years ago. So the capital plan is what we worked on several months ago and put together. That's the capital plan.
Right, that's the.
If this stuff is stuff that's not curling into capital plan.
That's right.
We're talking about adding to the capital plan after we've already done all the work on the capital plan three months ago and.
Yeah.
So I'm not as confused as I thought I was. We did all that work three months ago and now we're, now we're going to rework it.
I think your timeframe was longer too, though. It was longer, but.
A few months ago.
It was earlier. Yeah, it was, yeah.
Well, this big capital plan was major thing like the trucks and stuff. This is capital non-recurring for the smaller items that they need.
We had it rolled all together in one, right? We had those, like, if you look, there's airbags on that one. You know, there's periodic purchases, but we were trying to give the full, the full view of what capital.
Didn't we talk about in that capital plan? Did we talk about radio replacements? And Herschel replacements?
It's in there.
So why are we talking about adding it in this year? We've already put a placeholder in years to come.
Right. So these, these are either, where'd the plan go? Does Bill have it still? Can I see that book real quick?
Can we just make copies of that? That's why I'm confused. I thought we already had.
We have radios in there.
For some of these items.
We have radios in there and.
Now we're sorry.
Some of this is in there.
That's right.
Just, well, well. Make the copies. We probably have more money if we turn it. I agree with Chief Ingram here, probably in the states. But I think that what's, what's happened here is you two have some radio breakdowns. We need to add some stuff in, is that correct?
I don't want adding stuff in. I know Doug said he got a quote for both departments for the upgrade, everybody's all the radios.
Well, there's some talk about.
We had, we.
Didn't we put 70,000?
Yes, and that's what we have.
In like two separate years, yeah.
Yes.
Contingent on everybody.
Right, and that would be a. Yes, you did.
You have. Right, 70,000. But this is 200,000. This is 200,000. Big difference.
She's got it. She can bring it back.
And it was like two years out still. Doug, you got it there?
No, she took the, she has the final copy, the real copy.
Yeah, so I can give you a tiny bit of insight on the radios.
Well, I think that's where some of our information came from was from you originally.
Yeah, but this quote came from that this company came out to reprogram some of the existing radios in Stony Hill. And some of the radios, more than I thought we actually had, it's not the H, the CDM 1250s. Those are, those are out of date, but there's even older ones that are in like three or four of the apparatus. They cannot program it. They can't do anything with them. It's so old that it's like, you know, Commodore 64, it really is. So little radios are hard. As soon as they, if one of them dies, they die. We couldn't reprogram it. We couldn't do anything with it. So I think that was Doug's impetus to then look at, you know, doing this project sooner than later. So I don't know what the quote is for, but we talked about getting dual band radios and just doing the fleet in both departments at the same time.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, we stay as good as we've talked about. We agree with them. We talked about that, but it had to be tied to the police department upgrade is what we were. It was like.
I mean, it doesn't have to be. I think the thing was, you know, if you buy them now and we don't upgrade the dispatch center for another two or three years, then those radios are already two or three years old.
Yeah, there was something about the police department, they've been putting their system online. That's what we have ours. Ready to go.
Yeah, they put theirs on and turn the wire department off.
But that was the thing is do we just put all one with one?
Right, right.
Project to upgrade everything.
Isn't that what it is though?
It could be, but if the radios in the truck don't work, you may have to replace it.
With all we have a bunch of them, like CDM 1250s sitting around in boxes.
Yes, like, like there was.
I, I know I dropped one off at the firehouse like six months ago. It came out of my car.
We don't have any access on it.
I mean, I know all the officers had radios in their cars at one point and now nobody does. They all have portables.
They got too expensive.
You must have got good money to replace radio.
Not mobile.
Not mobile.
These are for.
140,000.
Yes, there's $140,000 in this budget. 27, 28.
Yeah.
I knew there was money.
But this is.
50,000. I don't know when we're going.
Can I chime in here, guys, real quick?
Time.
Of course.
Um, the police department had already upgraded all their radios, number one. So I went and got a proposal after, as Tommy was saying, we were trying to get the, a radio reprogrammed and they couldn't reprogram it and they said it's a dinosaur. So we have in our capital plan for Stony Hill, I believe it was $65,000.
Seventy.
I incorporated everything throughout the whole town, fire marshal, Bethel, and I went and got a quote to redo all the apparatus throughout the whole town because they're all the same age radios. And I, what I wanted to do was to up the, the amount that was in the capital right now. That's why I went and got the quote from.
Two years now, yeah, two years.
All right, well, that clears it up a little bit.
And instead of us just, instead of Stony Hill doing their radios, it would have been a townwide thing, which we should have did to begin with, with the police department. It should have all been under one capital purchase.
Our budget line item even says tied to PD upgrade.
I think that's what we planned for. I mean, we had, we put 70,000 in each department in the 27, 28 for capital plan. So it was 140.
Yeah, which I think it has to be a little bit more than that, Fred. And that was just going with, with getting one quote from Goose Town, which is a Kenwood radio. And that's not even going and getting other quotes on a Motorola or anything, which honestly, I didn't have time to do yet or even to start working on. But the Kenwood radios is going to be a more feasible price than going with a Motorola radio. I, I personally think we have to keep our, our Motorola portables. And, and I think switch to a Kenwood vehicle radio, which is going to save us money in the long run.
Well, we had Steve McAllister, you have a Kenwood radio on engine six. Does that radio work all right or? And the ambulance system. And chief, I can tell you that I just went to bid in another nearby apartment. And we bid Kenwood, Motorola and.
Okay.
Where's the other one?
Harris. He says Harris.
Harris.
Well, I'm, I'm literally, I'm literally here at Mohegan at the chief's show and there's different radios and different options to go with also. So it's something that I was just starting to look at. That's the only thing I wanted to bring that up to the, to the fire commission tonight.
So, so does having this money in the 27, 28 budget work or do we need to move it up a year?
Well, I think we have to move it up a year, Fred, and start working on this now.
But in the meantime, you got four trucks that the radios aren't working in.
No, they're, they're, they're working, but if something happens to one of them, we're not going to be able to get them fixed.
Okay.
Well, can we, can we move the money for the res, for rescue two's replacement out to 27, 28 and then move the radios from 27, 28 to 26, 27? Just, you know, flop the rescue truck replacement with the radio replacements?
Absolutely.
So that, that kind of, you know, not quite washes it, but sort of washes the expense from one year to the other.
Yeah, but it's not all going to come out of Stony Hill. You know what I mean, Fred? It's going to be for both departments.
Right, no, I'm watching the expense over wide, you know, townwide.
Yeah, probably moving that, right? We staggered the trucks. So if you move that million, all of a sudden 27, 28 becomes a four, five million dollar year.
Well, why not ask on, on two weeks if there's money in the capital not recurring for the radios now?
There. Radios are just need to be done.
Because he's got trucks that the radios are going to die. They're essential to him. That's it.
What would be different is they buy four radios when they die versus buying 200,000 dollars of the radio because of four might die. And they're going to buy the radios that are going to work in the future when these radios perish, right?
Yeah, it's just.
Maybe cheaper out in the long term to do all of them all at once first, piece by piece.
It'd be, but why did police department do all theirs without making one big plan?
Yeah, but that's a squad car that's going to replace with a new radio, put it back in. We're not replacing trucks all the time and getting radios put back in.
So hold list of trucks. We'll put radios in them.
What?
Okay.
All right. So if we, if we want to, we could ask in two, in two weeks if there's money not recurring now. I highly doubt there'll be enough for all of it. And I think they probably will take the piecemeal approach. Rather than the whole, the whole system. Uh, we can also entertain moving money as Fred had suggested. Actually, it helps if we move it, if you just move the radios a year, a year sooner. Because 27, 28 budgets, three, three, four million dollars. It actually lessens it a little bit, brings it into.
That's, that's the year with the ladder truck.
Yeah, yeah. It's not the worst thing in terms of level loading. Okay.
If you move their radios up, like you just said, it's not going to be a killer hit on this budget. And we've certainly lessened the 27, 28.
Yeah, yeah.
It sounds pretty economically feasible that Stony Hill get the radios because they need them. I mean, one of those radios out there is really old, right? Engine three, three years old.
Couple of the bumpers and the rest of them, they're, yeah, they're, I thought they were all upgraded when we did it 20. I mean, 20 years ago, but they were older than that.
Didn't you take old radios out of existing apparatus and move them into engine three? We got it. So those radios have to be old.
Yeah, that's the third.
Right, so they got radios that are real old. I mean, if we're going to recommend moving Stony Hill's radios up a year, I think we should recommend moving Bethel's up a year too. We had them all in one year.
I still like going to all of them.
Yeah, I, I think we should.
You're going to save money.
We should move the whole. I mean, Doug already got the proposal for, for both departments and the fire marshal's office. Originally, we had 140.
Well, give me some of my stuff out of the trucks.
Well, that, that all over the 27, 28 now.
Yes, well, yeah.
And then, you know, a question to ask for the order of finance, you know, when we go to purchase the truck. Are they going to pay cash for the truck in that first year or when the truck is delivered? So they could spread that cost out two years or three years or however long it takes to build the truck.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's kind of the whole point of preparing this capital. So they started spreading the money out now.
Exactly.
But you look at the number right now, it's 3 million. Yeah, you know, yeah.
So I would, I would make a motion that we take the $70,000 that's appropriated right now or in this plan for 27, 28 for both departments, move it a year earlier to 26, 27 and make it 100,000 each.
Next.
Make it how much?
100 each. 100 each. Any discussions?
Second it.
Was seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? I. Opposed? For that. Um, the other things you have on the capital non-recurring side of things, you have a gas meter for 1,100 bucks. Isn't that normally out of the operating budget? Don't the gas meters normally come out of the operating budget? Because we fight about those line items every, every year.
I feel like we, we've talked about so many gas meters in the past.
For the capital plan.
Um, that gas meter, that is to replace it. The coming out of the operating budget would be for gas, for recalibrating and sensors. It's not for the overall meter itself.
We, we, gentlemen, we just, ladies, we just bought a single gas meter this year. And the price was a lot less. I'm going to tell you right now that in anticipation of these tariffs, that's what pushed that meter up so high. We paid five and a quarter. And this, this is what they're up to now. And it's only been six months. Yeah, I mean, we used to be, we used five meters on that call today. You know, we had a very unusual situation. Thank God we had five good meters to use. But we're, we're finding out, we're using our meters constantly. These houses are all tight, you know, different types of construction material, alternative heating methods or maintenance. The meters come off the engine every time we go into a building, just to keep things safe. We need them. And we have a single gas, which I said this before, I just want to reiterate, we have a big meter class coming up in a couple of weeks anyway, which you're all invited to, by the way. Um, the leading lecturer and expert on it is coming to Bethel. We got, we got a federal grant that's coming in. It's going to be at the Stony Hill Firehouse. Single gas meters are extremely important because they have the ability to pick up these gases at point 0.1%. The four gas meters are not accurate, um, below 2%. Now you start looking at the lower explosive limit on a lot of these gases. Um, the meters pick up a 10% of the lower explosive limit, which on many of the common gases, the two most common ones are acetylene and carbon monoxide. Uh, 10% of low explosive limits below 2%. These meters aren't picking them up. So we're going into these places expecting meters to give us an early warning. They don't have the capability of doing it. So we had to find these single gas meters. Tommy was involved in it, Doug, except for, uh, Stony Hill about a year and a half ago. And when I went to one of the seminars at the FDIC, this gentleman's coming here, was running a class and I said, what are you guys doing? And he's said, get the single gas meter, et cetera, et cetera. And it turns out the one he recommended is the one that Stony Hill bought. We duplicated it for reasons that everybody would be familiar with it. Whether a kid jumps off the Stony Hill truck and grabs ours or we grab theirs, we don't know how to use it. Plus it picks up at 0.1%, which is 1.9% below what the four gas meters pick up. The five gas meters also, they're sensitive. They, they're not good at those low percentages. So having that one, that super gas meter is the guy's stand. But what he's proposing here is to getting a meter that will pick up if they'll lower them out. And, you know, would I love to have one downtown? Yeah, but if he's got one, I'm going to call him. We're going to come and use it. So we can, you know, kind of work these things in amongst the both of us. We're going to be that much more successful.
My point on it was I don't think it belongs in the capital non-recurring.
I agree. I think that should be purchased out of the, the operating budget. Also, by the way, that these the calibration kits for these meters are, are almost as much as the meter themselves now. So just for future reference.
All right. Stony Hill also had on-spot chains for the stick. I see that in, in, that could be in vehicle maintenance or could be in capital non-recurring. From 50, the high quote's 5,400, the low is 5,180. Any thoughts one way or the other? Operating budget maintenance or capital non-recurring?
I wish loudly, operating budget, there's money in the operating budget, you can do it now.
Yeah, do now or just drop it in there for next, next year?
As I said, there's money in the budget.
Yep.
Do it now, get it done. Coming into the season.
Yep. Makes sense.
Do you have on spot chains on your ladder truck? Don't think so. Tandem axle truck. We don't have on spots on that or the tanker. She don't want. Drive it.
Commissioner, can I interrupt you again?
You you're not interrupting, you're a chief, you speak.
Um, I take this out of my operating budget. After I go and do all the services and everything, and I don't have enough money to pay for all them services, where am I getting that money from?
I don't know, where'd you get the money to buy another car and cap for your truck?
Oh, we're still on the cap.
You asked the question.
I. I would put it in the capital non recurring, let board finance. Decide yes or no. You got those he. The chief has him carry this in his budget. He would have to put it in next year's budget.
My only issue with that, Rich, is is, you know, we spend a great deal of time putting this capital plan together and trying to get it pushed forward and. Now here we are several months later trying to revise it. And we haven't even gotten it pushed forward with the selectmen or the finance department yet.
Well, there's the capital and then capital non recurring are two different things.
No, it's not. They took the four oh three accounts out of the fire departments years ago.
My understanding is two different, these are for the large items that we're gonna. Bond or whatever we have to do with the board of finance has to come up, but the capital non recurring, that's money set aside in this year's budget. For unexpected expenditures.
There is no more four oh three accounts. There hasn't been in a long time. Since I was chief, I don't know. Did they, did you have a four oh three account or did I take one away when you were chief?
No, I think I had it, but I I'm still confused until how you expect a truck for New England. You put tire change on it. Like that shouldn't part of buying the truck. So they just stock truck and didn't have it. And you still have that.
But we had, we did add things on to it.
You had it a lot of times, I'm sure, right? And just take a stock truck and get nothing else, did you?
Yeah, there was only certain things we could change. There wasn't a lot of stuff we could change.
What if they had chains? I'm sure.
I'm okay, I'm not sure, actually.
No, I'm saying there was stuff we couldn't change if we asked, we could change.
Department of fifty four hundred dollar expenses come out of my budget. How do you be the vehicle maintenance or equipment and supply and something wouldn't be a capital item? Things have changed since I've been there.
How long do these change lasts?
They maintain them every year.
They can maintain them.
They last forever, so it's likely the truck.
Yeah.
I mean, I got a, I got a truck with two hundred thousand miles on it, it worked fine.
But so is everything else you buy.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I mean, if if the department feels the need for it, I think it should come out of their operating budget. If if they can't get it out of this year's operating budget, then they have to push it to next years. Like I said, I'm pretty sure Bethel operates their ladder truck with no chains and have for several years.
I think they chain one axle, if they have to, they're very good at chains, I mean.
I think they need chains for the winter.
Can you, can you guys meet halfway and then put it in there and have them uh? Let the board of finance look at and make a decision on that.
That's my suggestion.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I understand where they're coming from. I, listen, again. You know, we got the ladder downtown, it's old, I don't want to get into that right now. Jeez, if we need that second ladder on a snowy night, I wanna wait twenty five minutes for it to go for ten miles an hour from Stone Hill downtown. But I also respect the chief's concern about how the expenditure goes. So I think if we could kind of go halfway on this, let somebody else make the decision if they don't buy it. God, you're gonna have to put it in your next budget, next year's budget, but at least let's make, take a shot at it.
One thing there's an optics, there's, I have one concern, there's an optics problem going to the board of finance and they're gonna say, wait a minute. We just spent one point eight million dollars on a truck and you're coming back for five grand more? That, I, I.
Well, she told me he needs a radio.
When does the board of finance meeting? The nineteenth.
The third, third week in November.
Yeah.
What's it, what's it been into?
How much money is in there?
Nick and Dan are the twelfth.
Yeah.
Our meeting, our regular meeting.
Can they cover the expense right now on their budget?
They can, they can come back for the maintenance, the finance for an emergency appropriation.
Well, that would be capital non recurring, you know, two like that.
I think the truck needs chains for the winter. However, we get it to what that needs.
It have traditional chains, doesn't it? Doesn't have on spots, but it's got traditional chains.
It's a brand new truck, so.
I agree.
One of the dimensions.
They get chains for.
Yeah, and that's, it has. It's a matter, you don't have switch operated change, you have.
As long as they've got chains.
Chains.
Well, well, they got chains.
Yeah.
That's my concern.
Yeah, yes, the truck does have chains. I bought, I bought chains for the truck last year when the truck came in. And we wanna put on spots on it for the low ice storms that you run into that we don't know we're gonna get. For you're in a driveway with it, that that's the whole purpose of the on spot. Is when you don't physically have the chains there to put on. We do have chains for that truck right now.
They're only four to six inches, not even that.
Alright, anyone wanna make a motion anywhere around this? Risk making a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion that we go to the board of finance for, for the come out of capital non recurring.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Alright, discussion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Close.
It's three to two, mate.
So it sounds like it's an operating budget. Is the option. And that we'll put it either in this year if you have the money or question part of next year. Last item Stony Hill proposed, uh, her cutters, mini flutters, forty nine, fifty. For unit plus two, as soon as the unit plus two batteries.
Do that.
We have, we have in the capital budget, we have first.
Sixty thousand and then next year's.
Yeah, next year's budget.
I guess a replacement of stuff, this is just a mini cutter added in.
I don't know that we sliced and diced the, whether it was. Replacement or new or whatever, I think we just started to drop placeholders in for rescue tools through time. So I think, looking at this, we said sixty thousand dollars for and uh. Rescue tools, and I think it was, would be at your discretion how you wanna spend them.
Yeah.
So that's already in the budget. Any? Any takers, any discussion?
I agree with that.
Somebody's there.
It's already there.
Just have to wait the next year for it. Next year's not that far along.
So, no action there? No, no motion needed, no action. Earl, do you have any uh additional items to bring up as part of what we're calling the non recurring?
Yeah, I think that there's a, I think there's good balance between uh fire companies, uh. You know, the proposed budget, you know, turnout here is always a priority, you gotta keep your people's sake. Um, and then uh, and we do have some bottles that we've gotta balance out. You know, we, we, they borrow and stole or get that balance done this past year. And uh, we're able to get some new one, it's good. Uh, obviously tires. Grange at six. Uh, that might, that, that might be a couple hundred dollars short. But. So I think we're okay. But I wanna take this opportunity once again. I'm not kidding around here. We gotta do something with this ladder truck, guys. You know, we're, we're, and Chief Ingram brought this up earlier, is that we made some pretty solid, I thought, changes here in the last uh. Couple of months about how we move expenditures around that were substantial. You know, the refurishment of a couple of key pieces that apparatus. And elimination of purchasing chief's guard to solidify how much we need this tower ladder. And I'm gonna just expand on that a little bit. Is, you know, while we had, what we're trying to um do officer level classes now. Based on some OSHA recommendations that were made, that the officers have to, by standards, be trained to a higher level than the firefighter. And we all know that has to take place. We have a handful of classes that. Some of which we've already had, a couple more we're gonna have shortly, to meet those objectives. But, but we had the gentleman here from ISO the other night. And um, you know, we talked to him about the need for uh multiple ladders, et cetera. And you know, he did look around, he's a good guy from the area, he knows the area well, sees the incredible development that we are dealing with. The projects that are being proposed, which are substantial, the problems that are um have been already approved. And um, but once they're, you know, currently under construction. Um, this isn't a one horse town anymore, you know, gotta have two horses to get there and climb. And um, so it's this year. Fred P. Walt now. Uh, got a forty eight year old ladder. The ladder is forty eight years old. And the chassis, um, two thousand eight, if I'm not mistaken. You know, we're talking fifteen years, sixteen years on the chassis, it's almost approaching twenty years. And a forty eight year old ladder, um. I'm not gonna get into the trap that those guys got into a couple of years ago. You know, it's something we gotta do. You know, and and horse training here, as we did the last couple of months, to make this happen, I think is pretty fair. And I, I think um, I give you guys a lot of credit for the fact that you, I think you discussed it intelligently and. We came up with a good resolution to make sure it happens. And it's only now a year and a half away. I think we need to work hard to make sure it stays there. And uh, that's all I have to say, really. I, I'm good with what we asked for. As you can see, the the numbers for both us at Stony Hill would say, moving those radios over, I think that's a real good move. These poor guys got radios that came over on a Mayflower, you know, we had it. And and we have some older ones, we we compromised in getting the the lower priced radios, they're just as good. You know, the Kenwood and Harris are lower bid radios than the Motorola. But there's some big, big municipal departments here in Connecticut that use Kenwood and Harris radios as their primary systems. And they use the advanced system, once it's assisted by, you know, computer read and dispatch, um, and uh, the eight hundred truck each system, everything. Works fine. I, I worked in a department that had that on the spot. So, you know, I think we're heading in the right direction with that, so.
Yeah, so I think what you're, what you're sharing is important for the next meeting. Right? And that's, we gotta share that with Dan and with Nick and. Hey, listen, we gotta, we gotta start marching to this, that the reason we put it together was to meet the needs.
Well, Commissioner, I think you can see that we spent a lot of time putting that little packet together a few tonight. That involved going back at least twenty years at our records. And we, we've been working at for weeks. And we, there's a lot more too, and I could have thrown a whole slamel in there. We picked out the ones that weren't worth it. Especially ones that he had and he had. These guys have been singing that song for over twenty years. I don't know how you guys got by without it. I mean, it's just, um, it's just something we gotta do. I, I told, I shared this with Matt coming in the door today, Tommy knows he does it. But um, we did our, every Wednesday we do our fire reports and we're up to approximately five hundred and fifty fire calls now, Mike. And we, we have a little over two months left here. Folks, we're gonna hit six, six hundred and fifty fire calls. I mean, things are rocking around here now. We have to have the team do the job. This is part of it. Um, you know, you add any ambulance call, we did four thousand calls here last year. That's a call every other hour. Yeah, we staffed the ambulance during the day. Here's all about it here. And uh, I had a chief of similarly, similar sized town here, Fairfield County, in my office this afternoon. He's got twenty four paid firemen online and three administrative officers. Um, this population is only a thousand more people, but he's uh six more square miles than we are. And I'm not even gonna tell you what his budget is.
What's the budget? Ten million?
Yeah, south of where you were. You know, actually, two towns down. Whoa. We'd be looking, if we were sitting here and I was paid and Matty was paid and Tommy had a couple of deputies, we'd be. We'd be talking some serious money here. We're, we're still volunteers, we're doing it. Let's keep it that way with the right equipment and the right tools.
Don't get fight for me.
Yeah, I'm not guaranteeing that this is gonna last forever. I'm, I'm not a young kid, that's his job. Tommy's job, but it's. Hey, listen, I'm just sitting here singing the same song. Red was singing a couple years ago, Pete was singing a couple years ago. Just gotta make it happen, so.
Yep. Agreed. Alright, any further budget discussion? We'll close the topic. Move on to discussion of the, and the other reason the discussion of the. Uh. What did you refer to as the? Uh, discussion of the tax abatement, that's one of the things, I think it's, it's a big topic for the twelve. When, when Dan and Nick are here and and how we move this forward, right? It's been in front of them now for a year, right?
Longer than that.
Longer than that. Yeah, um. And uh, what was sent out in the meeting was just the, the review of the proposal and what we proposed and what we submitted. Um. And it also covers the number of people who would be eligible for it, which is one of their big key things, you know, how many people would be eligible. And I don't know that it's worth going back and looking at it and the numbers, but uh, the details are in the sheet, but. Um. So for Stony Hill, twenty seven out of seventy nine members would be eligible for tax abatement. Um, that includes out of town members, which we still haven't addressed. Um, twenty seven members similarly downtown, so you're looking at fifty four members would be uh, be looking for the. Uh, incentive and to refresh everybody, we, we're looking at the maximum incentive. Um. Two thousand dollars eligible members starting at year two and members of twenty five years of total service, eligible in perpetuity as long as they have tax liability. And the rules or the threshold we put in, I suggested was a five percent of total call volume and four staffing hours for one call. Uh, that's, that's the, the framework goal we put together. Um. There was some discussion, I heard a discussion about the uh, looking at the Danbury Plan. That Danbury Plan is rough. Like you get the maximum, you have to be in twenty five years. That's a, I don't know, what's the, what's the sentiment on, on that in Danbury?
Well, there's a volunteer chip for, remember the city council, this, this plan originally went back eighteen years. First proposal was eighteen years ago. And um. You know, a lot of those guys that aren't chasing calls now are chasing calls eighteen years ago. You know, they're in their sixties, seventies now. Eighteen years ago, they were driving the first engine out. You know, so these guys are hanging, hung in there for a long time. Um, city Danbury volunteers get nothing. Never had. Two hundred anniversary is in twenty twenty nine. Never got anything. Alright, so this is something that's been coming for a long time. Yes, if you read the uh. The parameters of qualification, there's really. The other thing is, is parallels here is, um, a lot of the young guys won't qualify. They don't own anything, can't afford it or anything.
And they also went with a tiered, it's a tiered system, opposed to, most recommending for full benefit.
So, um. You know, and in a, in this day and age, if you get a little bit older too, you may not wanna carry. A lot of tax liability into your later years, you may wanna, you know, gift your, your property. A lot of tax liability into your later years. You may want to, you know, gift your your property and stuff to your children and. You know, you may may not qualify for that, you know. Certainly something I'm have done and will do in the future with my kids, but. So.
I'm open to receiving gifts, but.
It's it's, you know, we gotta do something. I just said, we just did four thousand calls last year. You gotta do something.
Yeah, and I this is just a start too. I mean, I think.
It's just a start, right?
I mean, Tommy mentioned the low sap program. I mean, we have to start some places. We can't throw it at the Board of Finance all at once. Because they're just gonna say that's just, it's too much, it's overwhelming, not gonna happen. And I think that's why we we started with this. Let's get this to fly and then we'll work on other things like the low sap.
And I think we have to be prepared. There may be discussion of this Danbury Plan because I'm sure they know about it, right? But this is a way different situation. The all-volunteer department versus a slight incentive for a. I don't want to say smaller, but a department that is an auxiliary to their career department, right? So we just gotta be.
I'll probably use those terms, but I'll tell you what I would clarify on that is the fact that. There were four different tax abatement programs that that came to fruition at the same time. There was disabled vets, vets. People who qualify financially. And with with their income and their property values and the volunteer requirements. So all four of those came to a head at the same time. Under the current administration, all four were passing. The volunteers passed the other night and the disabled vets is gonna be. Tomorrow night at six o'clock. But I just want to add something to here. And over the last few months, we've had some. Past members, older members that were active when they were younger pass away. And some of them qualified for some benefits, but. Those benefit packages that were in effect when they were younger and active have gone south. They've gone south a one time ago. And looking back at what they're getting. They get, you know, get like, once get like twelve hundred and seventy-five dollars, you're always getting fifteen hundred. Is that where we kind of want to be? I don't think so, but at least they got a little something. And knowing the financial condition of some of those people that. You know, I I feel terrible that it's not more. I know some of the fire companies have resorted to taking their fundraiser money and buying life insurance policies for their members. That's money that was earmarked for other things like buying equipment, turnout gear, stuff like that. But they don't have anything. You gotta do something. So and I was on a couple of committees when it was over in Newtown. Where the fire company just, we had to make a decision. We're gonna buy some equipment or buy a life insurance policy for the members, you know, accidental death members. They went with the life insurance policy and. As as we all know, my my close friend Pete Blomberg dying was an example of that. They had that policy upgraded in Bosford about, you know, fifteen years ago. Thank God.
The town currently has two life insurance policies. No, they're not much, but there's two, right? There's two individual policies.
Yes, it's. One is. The current one is for something that occurs while you're performing the duties while you're in it. Performing the duties of a firefighter. That's a bottom.
So it's a line of duty.
The other one is just a general life insurance policy. That's fifteen thousand dollars. As long as you're an active.
And that's as long, right, as long as you're an active member. So it wouldn't apply to any retired members, right?
So all active members have a at least. For any death, not associated with the fire, it's a fifteen thousand dollar life insurance.
That the the one for what? If you're on duty, is that the new one from the state where it's a hundred thousand dollars?
That's just through karma as well.
And what you know, what that amount?
I think it's the same, ten or fifteen thousand.
It's right now, it's, yeah, I I was on that committee. Fifteen thousand is budgeted, State Fireman Association. If you have multiple line of duty deaths, they split that. We had two guys that died, I think it's seventy-five hundred each. And the hundred thousand that was given to the police officers. This coming year fiscal year will now apply to firefighters as well. And then shortly after the EMPs. Now, you politically are subject like the Hundred Club. Hundred Club votes on whether to give you that money or not. And then, you know, the federal benefit, but. I don't want to get political or anything like that, but well, yeah, it looks like that's going out the door now too, you know, through FEMA. And that was that's just under five hundred thousand now for a true line of duty death. So. But let's, you know, get realistic here. If you live in Fairfield County, you can get the hundred thousand from the Hundred Club. Get fifteen thousand from State Fireman Association and the four hundred eighty-seven thousand from FEMA. The line of duty death benefit there. And you've got a couple of young kids at home. You divide that by the next fifteen years. It's not six figures, it's five figures. It's probably nowhere near what that provider was bringing home to the family. And there's no escalators in there. What you get is what you're gonna get for the next fifteen, twenty years or whatever. So. This is, this is a pit, but it's a start.
All right, so Doug, so you want to represent that to the to the selectmen of the Board of Finance or? Are we gonna talk about the out-of-towners people at all or?
Uh, well, our original intent was to try to at least get something underway and then start dealing with the out-of-towners.
I think there's a, there was a motion in here, you know, referring to people out of town.
Yeah, it's down at the bottom. The reside out of town town about providing funds and taxes and challenging others.
Do you want to have any discussion of the, you know, the the tax size bill for the people in town or to get them up to ninety-nine?
That's all part of the IRS besides that.
Yeah.
The IRS besides that.
Yeah, again, that's if you.
So so if we voted that they could get up to two thousand or say, say a thousand for now. It would be up to somebody else to decide if they get a ten ninety-nine or.
If you keep it as a tax, a true tax abatement program for the state statute, yes.
Yeah.
If you just do it as an incentive, doesn't matter about anyone's tax liability and you're just gonna. Give it incentive to to the members for responding to calls and they don't have any tax liability, then that's a whole different.
Right.
That's probably ten million.
Like, if they get it to ninety-nine, but if they have a tax.
So if you, if you take the current town ordinance we have for the tax abatement for firefighters and you up it, right, and you change. How you get it and it's still a tax abatement program, only if you have a tax liability. You get. The money. So if you have a twenty-five-year-old firefighter that lives at home and has a car and he pays three hundred dollars in car taxes. And he's eligible for a thousand dollars in tax abatement, he only gets three hundred dollars. Off, you know, a tax abatement for three hundred dollars. Basically, the town will give him a check in July for three hundred dollars.
Is it is it possible that they get a seven hundred dollar? Check and then he pays the taxes on that?
Yeah, doesn't work that way.
You have to do a tax abatement or you have to do an incentive. If you do an incentive, that incentive is subject to income tax. If you do a tax abatement, it's it's not subject to income tax.
The IRS and the law they came up with because they don't consider volunteer firefighters. Well, they consider them employees at that point because you're providing a service to get a tax relief. You're providing a service. Not like the elderly aren't providing a service, veterans, right? They they didn't provide a service when currently, you know, if you're a retired veteran or whatever, you get us that tax rate.
I mean, I think my whole point behind making it a tax abatement was it's a jumping off point. Let's. Let's take something that the town already has in place and and adjust that. And then if we want to talk about, you know, incentivizing, you know, the members that don't have that full tax liability. You know, a year from now, maybe we can change it from a tax abatement to an incentive program. I just, I'm trying not to, you know, make it an overwhelming situation for the Board of Finance to consider. They're gonna say. Holy cow, look at all this money that, how are we gonna fund this? Starts, you know, it's it's a baby step thing in my mind, the way I was trying to present.
Here, my, I just talk about something that took place in Danbury. It's kind of a reverse thing. What we're talking about here is the city just signed a contract with the firefighters unit. And one of the things the mayor wanted was a commitment for more of the career firefighters that live in Danbury. And that didn't go, all right? So it was a hundred and thirty-seven career firefighters in city Danbury, thirty-four live in Danbury. And the mayor is a little uptight about that whole situation. Signed the contract, everything's fine. And then the next day gave all thirty-four Danbury resident firefighters a fifteen hundred dollar stipend. A lot of people were happy about, guys living in Danbury were happy about it. So there there's a way of. There's always ways to take care of the people that live in town and work in town or whatever. That's kind of a different thing. That's a career department. But I think you're also gonna have to look down the road here at the equity in paper call. The paper call is just what it is. You get a reimbursement for the number of calls you do. And I think that's a very fair and equitable way to build a business, right? You know, both myself and Doug live over the line in Danbury. I was fifty feet over the line in a Danbury. A little bit further and we don't qualify at all. Two most active guys in town. So this is stuff that we have to look to rectify or modify or.
Now, you're in Danbury, he's got a tax.
But I don't. I can't tell you how many years I got in Danbury, but it's a lot. I gotta enough to get all you guys pensioned, so. But it's gotta start somewhere, like you said, but this also look in the future is something that's gonna be echoed.
Let's get this going before we.
Yeah, you know.
You know, you also gotta consider, I mean, you're looking for, you know. How many millions of dollars to replace a ladder truck? You're standing there. You you can't just throw millions and millions and millions out there and say, fund us.
Did you pay somebody five dollars a call?
Let's get this incentive going and then deal with.
Gotta start somewhere, like you said.
Yeah, right, right. And and I don't, I don't know that five dollars a call is gonna, that's gonna do it.
Not gonna get me.
Doesn't get me out of bed anymore than no dollars a call does.
Listen, you you go down to Long Island and they have 401K programs. They have everything for the volunteers down here. Of course, New York State's always been.
The county system.
Yeah, it's always been proactive.
You want to talk about a benefit that they should talk about offering, start offering health insurance. Look at the health insurance costs that these people are, you know.
And you know what, Fred? It's not just offering them health insurance, it's offering them access to health insurance.
Yeah.
You know, if I had a landscaping business and I had a hell of a time getting insurance or forty-inch, I was an active volunteer fireman.
And you can jump on the municipal land?
Buy into the plant. I'll pay the whole.
That's in the state statute, you can't.
Well, they allow that.
The towns can't allow that.
The town can allow it. The town currently does not.
But it is actually in the statute.
Correct.
There's a lot of stuff like that, you know, you can do. Down the street Newtown, you know, you get free park passes, get free dump passes. Get, it gets a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars each guy, each member, excuse me. It's can pick out of the hundred and fifty they get to get a job shirt, sweatshirt, sweatpants or whatever for free. You know, things like that, you know. I think the ambulance still gives out a gas card, five dollars per call. You know, there's a lot of little things that you can do, but like you said, let's start somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, this this, the the whole incentive thing, that was part of that study we did a couple of years ago was was, you know, look at incentive plans. You gotta start someplace. I mean, I don't think we can do, it would be, it would be irresponsible of us to try to. Do an all-encompassing incentive program all at once.
I think that's why we're out of here now. There's so much that we've. Kept bringing up about it, not just staying on one topic and getting it through.
Exactly. You know, you you made a mention about the cost of that ladder truck. And, you know, for power, right? You look at the two thousand eighteen budget that I gave you copies of.
Half a million less.
One million less. One point eight million in that. Now it's a two point eight.
Yeah, well, what they got now is two point four.
I don't know if you're gonna buy one for two. I don't care who you're buying from.
Well, yeah, from eighteen when they bought it.
Wow. A year ago, we had bought Stony Hills for under a million.
Should have bought a used beautiful ladder tower out of Bethel Hills for two hundred and fifty-one thousand. That is just totally reaper and lots of time.
Apparates manufacturers are all under under scrutiny for collusion now because the prices are just.
Yep. You know, some of them, as you mentioned earlier. Giving them cash upfront to reduce the cost. Some of them aren't doing that anymore.
Yeah.
They they just don't think it's a feasible financial.
By the time they build the truck, it's costing them more money to build the truck.
Well, most of those manufacturers now have escalated costs in the contract. And if they, the purchaser agrees to pay that additional cost, it's time to cut it. And it's not cheap for doctor percentages like, you know, four percent a year. Takes three years to build a ladder truck. You've got another twelve percent on your plate. It's a lot of crazy stuff there.
All right, not to ask again. Is what you read, what you're gonna present to the selectmen and the Board of Finance?
Well, we we went and presented, right? We presented to you guys, I don't know, four months ago, five months ago. I think.
One of the others like when wanted more information, what would end up costing to the town, so.
But that was already in the.
It's already in there. Every day, approximately twenty-seven members per department would be eligible. For two thousand dollars, but of those twenty-seven members of each department, not everybody is eligible to get the two thousand. They don't have a two thousand dollar tax liability, so the maximum amount is gonna be whatever. Two thousand dollars is times.
And I think the state statute allows. For you to put something in an ordinance about living in another town that you can. So if you live in Danbury and you're eligible, because I know that when Anne Marie was a tax collector.
And and we addressed that as our original motion.
In Bethel and they would every year verify his tax liability in Bethel and it would send it basically send a check to the town tax collector and it would reduce his tax.
And and that's addressed in our original motion.
So that.
I don't, I don't think we need a motion, Mr. Miller. I think we're just a recommendation that we we present our original motions again. And seek guidance as to whether or not they're gonna pursue funding it.
Someone in a week.
Right.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So with that being said, I'll make a motion for adjournment.
All in favor? I didn't ask. Was it discussion on adjournment or make discussion?